Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's regular commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. Please call the roll. Mr. Frankel.
Present.
Mr. Long.
Present.
Mr. Bolston.
Present.
Ms. Burns.
Here.
Mayor Petrolia. Here. And please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Okay. Any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We need to remove items 6D and 6E from consent agenda.
6D as in dog and E?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And 6G, we need to move to regular.
Okay.
Agenda item.
So that'll become 7AA?
Sure. And actually, speaking of regular agenda items, 7A, as it currently is positioned, should also be removed from the agenda as well.
Okey-dokey. Anything else? From anyone else? I do have, I wanted to remove, well, first of all, I wanted to ask that we move forward 7D to 7, let's call it 7A, since A is missing now. Because there's a, the representative has a prior engagement and needs to get out of here as quickly as possible. It should be very quick. So let's move that to 7A. And then also, I wanted to ask that we have just a conversation, quick one, on 6M. Can we make that 7BB? Okay. So 7M will become 7BB. Anything else? See nothing? Entertain a motion as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Okay. We have two wonderful people in the audience we want to invite up. We have our legislative update coming from Senator Berman and then Representative Casello. Thank you and welcome to both of you for being here.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. Congratulations to the new commissioners, Commissioner Burns, Commissioner Long, and welcome to everyone. So we're back in town. The 60 most dangerous days in Florida ended last Friday, and they were pretty dangerous.
Survived. Good for you.
We did survive. Lots of cultural war issues, which I'm sure you all have seen. We spent a lot of time on that, and unfortunately, what it resulted in is missed opportunities to discuss other things that affect people's pocketbooks. We still have a major property insurance crisis, which I'm sure all of you are aware of. We did not do much. We passed one bill on that issue, and hopefully, we'll see, but I don't see property insurance rates going down anytime soon. We have a teacher shortage. We have a healthcare cliff right now with a lot of people who are going to be coming off of Medicaid because the COVID emergency is done. And then we have, of course, our affordable housing issue, which we did address this session, which I'm really happy about. We passed a bill. It was the priority of the Senate President. It's called the Live Local Act. It's got a lot of money for affordable housing, for what's known as the sale program and the ship program. We are, there's money, there's tax breaks and all sorts of things, but you should be aware that there are some things in there that could potentially affect development here in Delray Beach, particularly if you build in a commercial or industrial area and you put affordable housing in, you will be able to waive zoning and height restrictions. So we may end up having to go back and do a glitch bill on that issue, depending on how it all works out, but just be aware of that. We had an unbelievable budget. We have $117 billion budget. Everybody voted for the budget. It was very robust. It's really good. I mean, our state is in good financial shape. Part of it is from the federal government. Of that $117 billion, about 41 is from the federal government. And we did really wonderful things in the budget. We put a lot of money away for environmental projects, including the Everglades, the Indian River Lagoon Springs, all sorts of items on that. We did raise the amount of how much we're funding for each student. Unfortunately, we're still woefully low in the list of 50 states about how much we fund for each student. You know, the number I hear is that we're 48th out of 50th. I'm not sure if that's 100% true, but we are on the bottom end, but we did raise student funding. We also did increase insurance for children, for the Kid Care program, which is really important, because, as I mentioned, you're going to have all these people falling off of the Medicaid program, and they'll be uninsured. We did, again, the city of Delray, again, did very well in the budget. I know last year, you did really well. I think I have, let me see, I think I have three or four projects that you got. First is the Delray Beach Public Seawall Improvement for $1 million. The Delray Beach Historic Campus Drainage and Parking for $100,000. The Lakeview Park Playground Improvements for $100,000. Oh, and then the Teen Center, which I was going to talk about, so I'm glad Nancy Shannon's here, too. We got $250,000 for the EGAS Teen Center. Really proud of that. And if anybody has some good connections with the governor, including on your projects also, I would be asking the governor not to veto these items, because they're really important to the city and to the community. So anything anybody can do to put in a good word with the governor on those, that would be great. We're hearing that the vetoes are going to come out fairly quickly this year, and we're also hearing that they're supposedly going to be light, but you never know, until everything happens. So anything you can do on those issues, that's really wonderful. You have a great lobbyist. I thought he'd be here. He's usually here, Matt Forrest, and he does a great job for the city, and I think that's partly, you know, we owe a large part of the success to all his advocacy on behalf of the city. So Rep. Casello is going to give you a little bit more about the preemption issues and the things that we did that make your job a little bit harder, but I'm always happy to represent the city of Delray Beach, and after Rep. Casello finishes, we're happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Good evening, commissioners, mayors. Good to see you all. My first time here in the chambers.
No.
Yes, it is.
Wow.
So due to the redistricting, I'm now representing your city, and I'm proud to do that. Like the Senator had said, that, you know, I guess one of the more important things that we do when we go to Tallahassee is try to bring money back into the communities. I mean, let's be honest with each other, that's why we're up there most of the time. So it was great. It's a team effort. It's with the Senate side, with the House side, and with Matt Forrest, who's like the quarterback of it all, to get this thing done. And if you've ever seen how the budget appropriations works, it looks like a Black Friday at a Walmart, where everybody's shoving papers into the silos of where their bills or appropriations are. The Senator mentioned the budget, $117 billion. $41 billion of that came from our federal government, which is good, you know? So we're, as the governor would like to say, we are flushed with cash. In my presentation, I'm going to do a lot of reading here, because the bills, the, there was like over 1,800 bills filed, 1,800 bills, you can imagine, over, a little over 200 were actually heard on the House floor and probably the Senate side.
About 300.
About 300. Okay, about 300. So once they get to the House floor or the Senate floor, there's usually a good, they go through a committee process, usually a three-committee process, depending what the subject matter is. And if they survive the committee hearings, then they, if the chair of the Speaker of the House or the Senate President decides to put it on the agenda to be heard on the floor, and then we can take a vote on it and get it, try to get it passed. Usually, once they get that far into the process, it's usually successful. But with that being said, the, I'm going to read the bill numbers, too, so you can write them down if it's a point of interest for you, and we can come back and get a little more intimate with our details and everything like this. I know you pressed for time here. We could, we spent 60 days up here, you know, we don't want to spend half that much here. So I'm going to start off with issues here. The local government comprehensive plan, this was House Bill 359, Senate Bill 550, and this would allow for the capital improvement element of local comprehensive plans to have a option to modify administratively if all projects have been adopted by the project's appropriate board. Additionally, the bills amend language to allow for the prevailing party in a challenge to recover attorney fees and costs in challenging or defending a plan or a plan amendment, including reasonable appellate attorney fees cost. This bill also, this is the key word when we, prohibits local government from enforcing any land development regulations other than those related to the density or intensity on any of the institutions within the Florida college system. So, right, shaking, can we shake our heads a little bit on that? But preempts you. Land use and development regulations, this was House Bill 439, Senate Bill 1604, and in its current form, revises and amends a variety of elements impacting local government comprehensive planning, as well as methodologies and data usage and planning period timeframes. The bills include local governments must comply with the special mass rate decisions where land use decisions were challenged by petitioners who were previously denied. Chiefs of police. I thought I saw the chief. This one's for you. This is, this was House Bill 935, and what this bill does, this bill prohibits, prohibits a municipality from terminating a police chief without first providing them written notice and allowing them opportunity to offer a response at the next regular scheduled council meeting. The bill specifies that a municipality cannot waive or modify this requirement in a contract or include a non-disclosure clause that prohibits a police chief from responding to their termination. Chief, I hope we never have to practice that here, but it's there for you. Another one here with the municipalities here, it's the municipality boundaries support, and this was Senate Bill 718, House Bill 653, and it specifies that before starting annexation procedures, a local government shall prepare a feasibility study for the proposed area to provide needed clarification on the process of contriction. The bill requires the city to get permission from at least 50% of the owners in an area proposed to be de-annexed when more than 70% of the land is owned by individuals, corporations, or legal entities. Contriction means the reversion of property when municipal boundaries to an uncooperated status. That passed. And this one here is for all elected officials. This one's probably important, because it's going to affect each one of us who are for office, and it's the final disclosure for elected offices. And this was House Bill 37, Senate Bill 774, and what it requires, all municipal mayors, city commissioners, elected members of the municipal governing body, and members of the State Commission on Ethics to file an annual full disclosure of financial interest, Form 6, that's Form 6, with the Florida Commission on Ethics. These individuals are currently required to file only a limited disclosure on financial interests, which is our Form 1 that we fill out. If this bill becomes law, and I think the governor has signed this, the Form 6 requirement would go into effect for elected municipal office officials on January 1st, 2024. So just keep that in mind next time we're filing your disclosures, financial disclosure, that'd be pretty important. And another one that we have here is the building construction prohibit. I hate to preference these things, these bills, by saying prohibit. It's the worst thing in the world. I come from local government up there in Boynton Meadows, the city commission, and anytime preemption and prohibited, that's a terrible word to use in front of a commission. But anyway, this prohibits a local government from making substantive changes to building plans after a permit has been issued. If substantive changes are made after the permit is issued, the local government must identify specific plan features that do not comply with the Florida Building Code, the Florida Fire Prevention Code, or the Life Safety Code, or any local amendments thereto. The specific code chapters and section upon which the changes request are based must be provided to the permit holder. A local fire inspector, plant review, or building official who fails to comply will be subject to disciplinary action. And this, this one here is a, is a good one here, and it's going to be a lot easier to take the cities to court now and file lawsuits and stop any kind of a project until it's heard, goes through the courts, and this is what this is. This is Senate Bill 170, and the bill grants attorney fees for successful challenges to the county, municipal, local ordinances are arbitrary or unreasonable. Arbitrary or unreasonable. We can each have a different opinion of what's arbitrary and what's unreasonable. Provides the reasonable attorney fees, costing damages up to $50,000 may be awarded to the prevailing plaintiff of in any civil action challenging the adoption of a local ordinance on or after October 1st, 2023 that is arbitrary or unreasonable. Allows for consideration of a proposed ordinance to be pushed to the next meeting without any further public notice. If that meeting is announced in the meeting and a consideration is included on the next agenda, this applies retroactively. Requires local government to appear business impact statements before adopting certain proposed ordinances. If certain conditions are met, requires suspended enforcement and expedited court review of certain local ordinances whose validity is being challenged on the grounds that is expressively preempted by the Florida Constitution or state law or is arbitrary or unreasonable. And provides that an attorney's signature on legal filing constitutes affirmation that the lawsuit is not filed for certain improper purposes. It allows imposing sanctions for attorneys who violate that. And just a couple more, if you may. You know, we're here expressing this, and you can imagine sitting on the Senate floor or the House floor, and we hear these, you know, sometimes 60, 70 bills at a time, and if you're not really paying attention, which we always don't always pay attention, that's the truth, folks, that you might miss something. But, you know, we go over this, and we have a great staff. I know the Senator has her staff, Evelyn, and I have my staff, Brian V., and if it wasn't for these people that work with us up there in Tallahassee, we wouldn't be where we were. It'd be just totally impossible for an individual to do it all on their own. But this one here is House Bill 1417, residential tendencies. This bill grants a full and complete preemption of all landlord/tenant issues to the state, expressly overrides any local government regulations on the screening process used by a landlord in approving tendencies, security deposits, rental agreements, application and fees associated with such applications, terms and conditions of rental agreements, the rights and responsibilities of landlord and tenant. Folks, this is a anti-rent control, pro-landlord, and does nothing to get to the root of the housing crisis that the Senator had mentioned earlier. Palm Beach counties have passed pro-tenant ordinances, including a renter's bill of rights. This bill would take all of that away. Did you, Senator, did you talk about the vouchers?
No, I didn't.
Okay. I just, just two more things, if you.
I was going to bring that up if you didn't.
Yeah, yeah, no. And here's the deal. We've, obviously, as the Senator said, we give X amount of dollars per student, and that's how it's depending.
The money follows the student.
The money follows the student. Very good, Mayor, and this plays a big part in this. And right now, it's roughly $8,500. And what we have do, it's called a universal voucher. Universal voucher. That means every student, no matter where they go to school, even home-school students, are entitled to a voucher of $8,500. They can take that $8,500 and go to anywhere, any school, private, Catholic, Protestant, any kind of religious school, or stay in a public school system, and take that $8,500 with them, and it leaves the public education fund, they draw it out of there, and it follows the student like you mentioned there. There's no cap on this as far as gross income. So, and I used analogy that, when I was on the House floor, that, God, I mean, even Tiger Woods's kids could get this voucher, and I did not get a call from Tiger Woods, but it was mentioned, I shouldn't be mentioning names like that, so.
I get a call now.
Yeah. But I think this is huge. I think this is a real big one, that the money's following the student. I think it's going to have a vast impact on our public education, or as they like to call it in Tallahassee, government education. It's sad to hear that. And the last one I want to get, because I make no bones about this, I'm a union car-carrying guy. My dad was a union member, and the governor, our governor, he had a, he had a, an issue with one of the unions, the school unions, okay? That's no secret here. It's been well documented in the papers. And what it does, it prohibits the use of a paycheck deduction for most public sector union dues, and increases the 60% required employee membership, potentially decertifying a union if they can't meet that threshold. So what that means, ladies and gentlemen, is that anybody who's been having their union dues taken out of their paycheck, like the United Way and everything else, we get taken out of our paychecks automatically, this is not going to be the case for union members. Now, they did a carve-out. They did a carve-out for our first responders, police, fire, correctionals, and the first responders. But what this means to you, as a governing body, a city, now your sanitation workers, your park workers, and everybody else that works for the city and makes this great city what it is, are not going to be able to have dues taken out of their, out of their paychecks. It's going to be a real issue. I know I've been talking to the Palm Beach County Teachers Association, they're implementing a plan to try to get ahead of this before it's implemented, and I would highly recommend that you talk to your union officials here in the city and tell them that this is coming, it's law, and that we have to make, you know, something to do to take that place if that's what they, if that's what they so do. But, you know, once again, and just closing real quick, it was, not all Tallahassee's bad, all right? But what I get in the House, there's 120 of us in the House, we are a, there's a supermajority across the aisle, folks, and a supermajority in the Senate. And anytime you have a supermajority in any kind of government, it's not good government. It is not good government. It's not democracy, okay? You need both sides to give, to take, that gray area, the debating. They have no need to debate now. There's only 30, 35 Democrats in the House, and only 12 in the Senate. They have supermajorities in both houses, and they own the Florida Supreme Court. So it's a difficult thing up there. So when we go up there, we fight hard. We've got a good team, the Palm Beach County delegation, we fight hard for all the cities. And I know the Senator and I, when we have constituents coming around, we don't ask if you're Democrat or Republican, or even if you live in a, in a district. If you come into the office or call the office, we're going to help you, and that's what we're here for. And, you know, we look forward to continuing to serve this great city here. Our offices are always open, and look at, some of the, some of the bills that we put forward come from great minds like yourselves. You know, you think of an idea, say, look, this could help if we do this, this, and we get it up there in Tallahassee, put it in drafting, and hopefully, we get a bill and some hearings on it. So that's, that's what Tallahassee's all about, folks. It's, it's not a real fun place to be. It's a challenging, but, you know, like the Senator and I always said, someone's going to do it, and we're proud to do that. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and thanks for that update. I think that was a great overview, because I'll tell you, when you did come in and say it was 60 days of danger, of very dangerous days, I don't disagree with you, and I think, I start to wonder why does, why do I feel like many people in Tallahassee don't like the rest of the state? These are nonpartisan bills. They're not going to just affect the Democrats, they're going to affect the Republicans as well. And when you're taking money away from our school system and placing it elsewhere, watch what happens. It's not going to be a good effect, and I think that, I'm hoping that it shows the signs quicker than later, because once it's ceded, it's harder to get it back, and it can be a slow process to, you know, a bad area, or it could be a fast one, and I'm hoping for the fast, because, again, this is, this is our education system for our kids, and I don't know what's going to happen. And we already are, I mean, I know that the public here feels very strongly that we are putting so much of our taxes to the, the school system, many of which don't have children here, and they question it, but it's important, you know, even though I don't have children in the public school system right now either. But when you're gutting the system, you have to wonder what we are going to have as a product of that in the next 12 years, and that's fearful. Not to mention half of the other things that you mentioned, I mean, I don't even want to go into it, but that one is so near and dear to my heart, because I feel like that can really make a huge difference in what Florida becomes. So, anyway, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, I don't think we alluded to it yet, but there was another bill that passed. First and foremost, they tried to lower the age of gun ownership from 21 down to 18.
18, yep.
And this is after they made that promise to the Parkland parents, that that would never happen. Fortunately, it never got moving in the Senate, but it did pass the House. The other one that we all should be concerned about out there in public is the concealed carry.
Absolutely.
No more permitting needed. If you have a gun, you can put it under your coat, in your pants, under your arm, wherever you want, and carry that gun down Atlantic Ave. Chief, I know this, you'd have, this has to be a concern for our law enforcement officers. First and foremost, they tried to lower the age of gun ownership from 21 down to 18. And this is after they made that promise to the Parkland parents, that that would never happen. Fortunately, it never got moving in the Senate, but it did pass the House. The other one that we all should be concerned about out there in public is the concealed carry. No more permitting needed. If you have a gun, you can put it under your coat, in your pants, under your arm, wherever you want, and carry that gun down Atlantic Ave. Chief, I know this has to be a concern for our law enforcement officers. And that passed, and folks, and this is a prediction, this is a prediction, open carry, open carry, where somebody can sling a rifle or put a holster on, carry a gun in the open, that's coming to a session near you, all right? It's coming. And it's scary as it sounds, but that's what we deal with, that's the mindset of some of the things. And like you said, Mayor, it doesn't just affect Democrats and Republicans, it's statewide, you know? And it's...
Landlords are not just Democrats, Republicans too, and the bills that are coming through are going to affect everyone.
Exactly. And we gotta stop making this partisan divide.
I agree 100%.
We're all here to help all Floridians, all Floridians, and that's what our offices try to do. So, thank you, I won't take any more time.
You guys have done a great job. Thank you so much for fighting for us. Is there anybody else that wants to ask some questions? Yes, sir. Deputy Vice Mayor.
Well, I just wanna thank you guys. Thank you to Senator Berman and Representative Casello for being here tonight, giving us the good, the bad, and the ugly. Lot of bad, unfortunately, it sounds like, the tax on our public education, on our home rule, and on our unions, and it's scary. But, you know, just hearing about it for a few minutes was demoralizing, and you guys do this for 60 days, I don't know how you do it. And what you guys do up there ain't easy. And so I just wanna thank you for your hard work up there. It's largely a thankless job, frankly. And so thanks for being here tonight and kinda giving us the lowdown.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Frankel.
Very nice to see you both. Thank you for hosting us for Palm Beach County Days. It was always good to be up for that.
Yeah, it was good.
Question I had was something that's very important here in our city, about how some members that you serve with tried to restrict our ability to regulate Airbnbs and other vacation rentals, and it's my understanding that isn't going to take effect.
It failed. So thankfully, this year, again, every year, pretty much, there's an Airbnb bill, and once again, it failed. So that's the good news. So whatever you are doing now with Airbnbs, you can continue to do in the future, but don't think it won't come back again. It is a perennial bill that comes, and at some point, you're gonna have to, you know, keep up there and keep fighting for yourselves and your cities, so.
Okay, Lynn, we gotta get to work.
Yeah. You got a lot of work on that issue.
Thank you very much. It's great to see you both.
Thank you.
And I did wanna talk about the schools real briefly, what he said. Don't forget that we are now, like any private school, any person at a private school, so if your child never went to public school, I mean, you will be able to get a voucher now.
Money is gonna be bled off.
Yes, and they did it in Arizona, they did the exact same bill, and they underestimated significantly how much it would cost, because all the private school parents put in for it. And there's no limit. Like you said, you can be a billionaire, you can be a millionaire, and now you're gonna be able to get, put your child in, you know, get $8,500 from the state, not to mention the home-school parents, which are also gonna, for the most part, gonna be able to get $8,500 per child. So it's a zero-sum game, unfortunately. If we had unlimited funds, that would be fine, but we don't. And I am very worried about what's gonna happen to our public school systems, and how they're gonna figure it out. There's even something in there that your child can go part-time to our public schools. So if you wanna send your child to high school to take calculus only, they're gonna be allowed to do that. And I don't know how this is gonna work for our school systems, it's gonna be a nightmare, so get ready. Buckle up. Yeah, so.
Commissioner Burns, would you like to say anything?
I just wanna say to Senator Berman and Representative Casello, thank you so much. And as an educator for the last 32 years, it's very concerning to me about this, these grants that these people will be getting and taking away from education, and also the union.
Yeah, the union targeting.
As a member of a union, my whole teaching career, so it's very concerning, and thank you for giving us an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was actually on the phone with Matt Forrest right before this meeting. And we were talking about the good news that we've made it onto the list, but we've been there before. I do appreciate you mentioning EJS Project, 'cause the city's not the only one that tries to bring funds home. Some of our nonprofits try to as well, so now we just have to hope that we don't, we're not on the veto list. So if you could just give me the governor's cellphone.
I can't get you one of his assistants, but...
You know, I have to tell you, and that is a big shout-out, if Matt's listening, he's been a great guide, and I would be remiss not to mention that we did not have a lobbyist for the city when I first arrived, and one of the earlier-on commissioners that I also served with is in the audience, Jordana Jorgura, who was with me when we were making the decision to bring on a lobbyist. And it has been absolutely one of the best things that we've ever done, because of the amount of money that we've received, we would've never had coming in had it not been for the great guidance of our lobbyist in telling us what, you know, projects are most likely going to be. If water was the real topic of that year, we put in water projects, and if it was, you know, environmental, we put in environmental. And that has made all the difference in the world, to be able to get some of those dollars that are going up to Tallahassee going elsewhere if you're not asking for them. So you guys have been great in standing up for us, but it's also been great to have a wonderful lobbyist leading the way.
And I will preference that, Mayor, is that if you watch Matt work up there...
Oh, I have.
At the Capitol, he's like, right, he's like the Energize and Bunny.
He's amazing.
And he works for a lot, a few municipalities, and the way he can keep things in their silos is absolutely amazing, and it's imperative to have lobbyists. Please, folks, don't ever, you know, try to vote that out or anything. That's the only way anything ever gets done in Tallahassee, is through the lobbying firms. That's just, that's the way of life.
I feel like we've got one of the best.
We're lucky, 'cause we share him with you up there in Boynton Beach.
Yes, absolutely. You got it.
So it's all good. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next presentation, which is our Delray Beach Greenhouse Gas Inventory. Mr. Kent Edwards.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's good to be here, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Deputy Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Kent Edwards, Sustainability Officer for the City of Delray Beach, and I will be presenting on the Delray Beach Greenhouse Gas Inventory and Emission Reduction Goals. So I'll start off and say that climate change is real. Unfortunately, there has been a lot of discussion and confusion that is more coming to an end, but I think that it's important for people to understand, this is a challenge that we are facing. There are things that we can do. So the International Panel on Climate Change is a worldwide consortium of scientists in many different kinds of study areas. They put together multiple reports, and the latest of those, the sixth, has recently been released. This is one of the summary-for policymaker slides, and it is, it has a lot of information on there, so let me walk through. So at the bottom axis, you have years, so 2000 to 2100. On the Y-axis, you have gigatons of carbon dioxide equivalents. The black line on the left is existing data that we know and has been collated. So you see the increase of 20% or so emissions in 2000 to 2018. Beyond that are model lines. So the red line is promises and policies that have been put in place, emissions would remain fairly stable over the future. And the increase in temperatures that would be associated with that would be above 2 degrees, 3 degrees Celsius or more. If policies are put in place, and if you look at 2030, then about a 50% cut in current emissions would be on the limiting of 2 degrees C or 1 degree, 1 and 1/2 degrees C. At 2050, then you'll be close to the net-zero line. So this lays out for us what we would need to do for carbon dioxide emissions in order to limit increase of temperatures. So why is increase in temperature important? Actually, I included a link to the full report, there's a tremendous amount of data there, and the citation that's required in order to use the information. But why is it important? At 1 and 1/2 degrees Celsius with that increase, and some areas have already seen that, talking about worldwide population, 14% would have severe heat waves. With just a 2-degree Celsius increase, that's a 20 percentage point increase of population worldwide that's going to face heat waves. Millions and millions of people. And the second paragraph is another example of this, and there are many, many studies that have been put together to make these estimates. So limiting increase to 1 and 1/2 degrees Celsius would reduce people that are frequently at extreme heat waves by hundreds of millions. If we go up to 2 degrees Celsius, then we're gonna have hundreds of millions of more people on a regular basis that are exposed to those heat waves. And heat is something that we all experience here in South Florida, along with the humidity is something that affects our ability to get out, it affects outside workers. On another piece of data, 2018 study, 25 years' worth of data for increase in sea-level rise. On that same trajectory of increase, at 2100, we would have 26 inches more sea-level rise. Over the last 100 years, we've seen about a foot, so we'd be talking, in 77 years, we'd see more than 2 feet. That trajectory is actually changing in sea-level rise, it's increasing over the recent years, so 26 inches is probably a low estimate. That's why limiting to 1 and 1/2 degrees, and certainly more than 2 degrees Celsius, is so important. And there is a link to the NASA study where these and other impacts are done. So this is why the City of Delray Beach joined a cohort that was organized by the Florida League of Cities and led by Ickley. We did a greenhouse gas inventory, and that inventory allows us to see where we are right now. What are the sources of greenhouse gases? What is the level of greenhouse gases? Because going forward, if we put policies, procedures, outreach in place to reduce emissions, we have to know how we're doing. We need to know in the beginning, where do we put our efforts? And then as we go along, we get to measure how well we're doing. This is one of the graphs from the study, and I don't expect you to look at all of the numbers, but I wanted to impress there was a significant amount of data that we gathered from different sources. We got FPL to give us information on residential and commercial and industrial sources of electricity. We had a transportation model that was free, that was done by Google to estimate the amount of emissions from transportation. We got information from Solid Waste Authority, our own city utility, the regional wastewater, and other places, to put together this very large amount of data to give us an estimate of our greenhouse gas emissions citywide. And we come up with a 550,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. This slide also from the report gives what are the sectors that that carbon dioxide is coming from. It's very informative in that 52% comes from transportation, and then more than 40% comes from residential and commercial energy use. So overall, about 96% of our carbon emissions come from residential, commercial, energy use, and transportation. So that points us in a direction of, we need to address those kinds of sources with policies and outreach if we're gonna make progress towards a reduction in carbon emissions. So that can be an overwhelming amount of data, and I just wanted to take a minute and emphasize again, why are we talking about climate change? And why is it important for us to reduce our carbon emissions and limit the increase of temperature? So what we are seeing is that, though there is not an increase in the number, the average number of hurricanes that we see every year, we are seeing an increase in the category of those hurricanes. So we're seeing more Category 3, 4, and 5, and those are the most devastating kinds of hurricanes. They're the most powerful, most damaging. Also, just a few weeks ago, in Broward County, saw rainfall like has never been seen before. There was flooding at the airport and the port that shut down operations, that's just a little bit south of us. And as the atmosphere warms, it holds more water, so we're gonna see more of these heavy rainfall events, because there's more moisture in the atmosphere to fall. We're also seeing more days of extreme heat. Last year, in some parts of the State of Florida, 90 days in a row over 90 degrees. That is extreme heat kind of weather, and especially for people that are working outdoors, that has a tremendous effect on workers and safety and health. Those are the direct kinds of effects. The indirect kinds of effects, economic impacts, so when the port was flooded and gasoline couldn't get out, then that's when everyone had to line up at the gas station, 'cause there was a shortage of gasoline. People could not have their normal commerce, and there's an effect on the economy. When a hurricane comes through, the economy of an area is affected, it takes time to rebuild, there's not the productivity that's there. So again, economic impacts are gonna be an indirect effect as we're facing climate change. Another indirect effect is with immigration. Those areas, and there are some Pacific Island countries that are looking at not having any emergent land. There are plenty of coastal areas in Asia, India is one example, where there already are seeing mass populations that need to relocate. There's droughts, there's famine. There's gonna be more of that happening, and I'm not here to say, oh, the sky is falling, but these are things that need to be planned for, and we, in a leadership role, can reduce our carbon emissions and keep our temperature rise down, and get other people on board with us. It is in our own best interest to do those things. So the suggested goal, and this comes out of the United Nations Race to Zero, and what was organized by Ickley and Florida League of Cities, is to reduce our carbon emissions by 50% by the year 2030. That is just seven years away, so that is a major undertaking, I realize that, but that is what we need to do to be on the right trajectory, to keep temperature increase down to 1 and 1/2 degrees, and then net-zero by 2050, so for your consideration, those goals.
Wow, that's perfect. Can't even believe it. You win the prize. You know, I have to tell you, in that chart that you put up, the heaviest, I think, greenhouse gas inventory that was recorded, wasn't that in automobiles? I was looking down just very quickly.
Percentage-wise, transportation was 52%.
Yeah, that's what I kind of thought I saw, I just wasn't sure if I was seeing it. So obviously, we're heading in the right direction to work on something that we, trying to take that down as quickly as we can, that's an area that we could actually do that. So what are we gonna do to do this? How are we gonna meet that goal?
Well, in transportation, we would need to look at more mass transit, fewer cars being used, more opportunities for people to get in to the area without having to drive an individual vehicle. Use of electric vehicles would be a part of that, so within the city, certainly using those, allowing people that have electric vehicles to have places where they charge. I mean, that whole range of purchasing and policies and regulatory is what we would have to do in order to make a difference.
Well, if we don't do it, I don't know who is, so I think that we are it, and I think that we need to be moving forward exactly in these, with policies like this, I really do. Because otherwise, well, and I think it may be anyway, but, you know, it depends on how our neighbors all feel about this, and the world feels about this, and how they respond to it as well. Because we're all in it together, it's a nonpartisan issue again, all in this together, and if we don't start recognizing it, it's gonna be very concerning. We aren't on a mountain anywhere, we're at sea level, very close to sea level. One other question that I have, because I've done a little bit of exploration of this, you know, as the temperatures rise, it's important to understand, it melts our ice caps, which adds to the water, which basically desalinates, slows down our, you know, our wonderful, almost like a wall of water out there called the Gulf Stream. And the Gulf Stream is higher on one side than it is on our side, so you start to wonder, if that slows down enough, are we gonna be impacted with even more water than what this, these, have they taken... more water than what this, these, have they taken into consideration?
There are some models, and they are circulation models. So, it is somewhat difficult, and you're talking about changes in the density of seawater because of runoff from melt. But there certainly are studies that say that that conveyor that runs from the Gulf of Mexico up to Greenland and in the North Atlantic could
Argent and salt.
Reduce the rate. Because once that water gets to the north, it actually sinks. So, that's where it goes. It goes into the deeps. If that slows down, then it's going to pile up even more. It would be more in the northeast United States, according to the models and research that I have seen. But yes, it would impact the United States and coastal areas.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll just, Ken, I got a little bit of a preview of this because we were in a group on Friday talking about it, a goal setting. You know, everybody does need to do their part, right? And as our city, we need to, and hope, like the mayor said, hope the rest of the world does our part, does their part. But as a coastal city, we really have to be a leader. We are going to be impacted the most. And as a coastal city, we're in demand. People want to be here. We are able to put additional restrictions on building. We are able to require more charging stations. Unlike maybe some cities in inland Florida or in the middle of our country that just can't do that. They're hoping anyone builds anything, right? But here, we can do that. So, I am open to any and every recommendation that you have. I look forward to in two years, when we take another look at our green building ordinance, and hopefully we get a lot stricter on that and lead our state in that conversation. Especially in regards to the charging stations and anything that we can do. We're lucky that we do have the auto industry here. We're selling more and more electric cars every day, right in our own backyard. But anything that we can do to help, I'm open.
And I'll just mention on the electric vehicles, one of the bills that passed was, that was sponsored by Representative Caruso, was now an evaluation of a purchase of a vehicle has to address maintenance and fuel costs. Both of those are less for EVs. So, the government is recognizing in its policies that like that, that will encourage government and private sector to go that way.
Excellent. So, if you bring up any suggestions or you think things that we could do in order to be able to push this even further, let us know. Because simple things can make a world difference over the long term, so.
We will work on it.
All right, sounds good. Anything else from anyone? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Edwards, for this great presentation. We so appreciate it. All right, moving on to the mid-year financial review. Mr. Hugh Dunkley.
Petrolia Vice Mayor Boyleston, members of the City Commission. This evening, it is my aim, so to speak, to give you an overview of the city's budgetary performance and, of course, the relative financial position as of March 31st, 2023, the midpoint of our fiscal year. The chart is a little bit, hopefully it's visible enough to both you and the audience. The total city budget for the year is allocated amongst various types of funds, largest of which is the general fund. The general fund houses most of the city's core services, police, protection, fire protection, parks and recreation, public works, et cetera. For this reason, we'll place a greater emphasis on the budgetary performance of this fund and its component departments. The general fund with a budget of $168 million makes up almost half of the total city budget. As is usually the case with most municipalities, the lion's share of the revenues for the general fund is from tax receipts. When I say tax receipts, I primarily mean property taxes, utility service taxes on gas and electricity, business tax receipts, and taxes of that nature. The total budgeted receipts from taxes approximate $103 million, as the graph depicts, or 61% of the general fund budget. The city also assesses user fees and charges for services that are provided to the general public. We also receive funds from units of other local governments in the form of grants and state sheared revenue. The miscellaneous category, revenue category comprises of investment income as well as receive some rents and royalties, contributions from the CRA for specified projects, and administrative fees that are charged to other user departments. So, the general fund expenditures, as to be expected, the lion's share of this is in the form of personnel services, and that's about 60% of the total expenditures here with the breakdown. Grants and aid, there is, that's reflective of $18.6 million that's already paid to the CRA for tax incremental revenues. So, we collect the taxes and then distribute the CRA's portion for the tax incremental revenue for the CRA. So, this category also reflects the grants and aid category, grants to nonprofit institutions that provide services to the city's residents. Hopefully, the numbers, my aim also, in addition to giving broad brushstrokes, is hopefully not to belabor you with too many numbers. So, this I won't particularly discuss each line items, but I just want to just indicate that the total general fund, the total expenditures, revenues rather, are collected year-to-date, represent 72% of the general fund budget. And this is the case because we collect most of our property taxes up in the first three months of the fiscal year. So, there the total collections are skewed. But year-to-date, we have collected 72% of the total projected revenues. For expenditures, the city, we have expended 53% of the budget. And the 53% is broken out, some are significantly in excess of the 50% mark, one of which is the granite aid, grants and aids row there, which I referenced earlier. The other is with the debt service, which our debt service is due well before the end of the quarter, that ended March 31st. Personnel services are biggest expenditure categories, right at, it's rather, it's a little bit below the 50% mark, which is encouraging. So, for the city's departments, individual departments within the general fund, most of the departments remain at or near the 50% mark. Those departments that were well below the 50% mark had vacancies or there were either episodic projects that the expenses, expenses which have not been incurred as of the end of the quarter. This graph here represents segmented information of the city's enterprise and special revenue. We have one major special revenue fund, which is the building fund. That's of major import to us because that generates a significant amount of revenues in the form of permit fees. The water and sewer revenue, sanitation and stormwater, those individual funds are holding their own. One thing that's missing from here is what we typically refer to as accrual basis expenditures, such as depreciation, accrued interest, and so forth. So, if we take the water and sewer fund, for instance, even though at first blush, it appears that the revenues are outpacing the expenditures, at the end of the day, we have depreciation expense in the amount of $4.4 million. So, you could readily see where the expenses will catch up with the revenues. In terms of the city's cash and investment position, the total cash and investments at the end of the quarter amounted to $195.4 million. And so, what I've done here is pretty much just put in buckets, the three main buckets where we hold all of our investable resources, either in bank deposits, we have a liquidity portfolio as well as a core portfolio. The liquidity portfolio is managed in-house, and the core portfolio is managed by a professional money manager. And the major distinction between the two is that the core portfolio tends to have maturities of a little bit, perhaps two years or greater, whereas our liquidity portfolio, we try and stay perhaps no longer than a year or so, a little bit over a year. But we're looking at $195.4 million in total investments. So, in terms of our investment policy, so the investment policy sets certain parameters, the first of which is what I refer to as sector allocation, which speaks to the type of investment. An example, whether it's treasury securities, agencies, corporates, asset-backed securities, what type of investment can we invest in? There is a limit, and the white portion of the graph that extends to the far right indicates the amount or the percentage tolerance to which we can invest in each particular sector. As of the end of the fiscal quarter, we were well within each permissible range. Then there is another limitation. It's called maturity, maximum maturity parameters. And so, what that is, is how long can we, what is it, the duration or the maturity of the investment instrument? If we're investing in two-year treasury notes or a 10-year bond, which typically we, most of our investments are well within maturity limits, and for the most part, we try to stay within a five-year. We don't go beyond the five-year maturity duration. Then the last is issuer diversification. And if any of you perhaps have been listening to the news, you've heard about Silicon Valley Bank and Credit Suisse and those entities which have caught to some degree some financial trouble. But what our investment policy does, it says, we're not allowed to invest, depending on the type or the sector, US treasuries or what have you, we can only invest up to a specified percentage of our investments in that particular vehicle. US treasury securities, excuse me, the issuer diversification is pretty much close to 100%. But for other more volatile or more risky investments, the limit is significantly lower, in some cases 5%. During the quarter, we had a net inflows of approximately $579,000 in, to our core portfolio. And the major takeaway from this graph in particular is the fact that we, there was kind of a movement towards the corporates and the asset-backed securities. And there, what we noticed was that the spreads in those particular investment types were a little bit greater. They widened, so the, there was more of an appetite to pick up more of those investments. We did pick up some treasuries, but we sold a little bit more than what we picked up. All in all, the total quarterly performance for the portfolio, there was a 1.51% total, on a total return basis. And the total return, on a total return basis, what that means is I'm not only looking at the net inflows in terms of interest and investment income, what I'm looking at also is what they call unrealized gain or loss. So, in terms of, if we're holding a particular fixed income security and the interest rates are rising, there is a great likelihood, as has occurred last quarter, that we're going to have a significant unrealized loss. In this case, for this quarter, we had a total return of 1.51% versus the benchmark, which is, which earned 1.55%. In dollar terms, we had a change in market value of our investments of $1.1 million and $630,000 in interest earned. And with that said, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. To the commission. Anyone? Just a couple of questions. You, on the earlier slides, there was a, other sources, 27%. I just was curious, go back, all the way back to the beginning real quick. I wish I'd put down the number. Wait a second.
Oh, I think I know where you're speaking of.
Maybe you just might have passed.
This one here.
No, there was one where you had a percentage. I just was curious as to why it was only 27% when everything else was at that 50% level. There was like a grid or a graph.
Oh, okay, yeah, definitely.
Why are we at 27% there? And, I mean, I understand the fines and forfeits. Well, I was going to ask about the fines and forfeits too. It would appear to me that we were low on estimating our fines and forfeits because we're already at 97% of what we expected to come in. I would think that that is probably half of what we should have predicted? Yes?
Correct.
Okay. And then, why are we so far behind in the other sources? Just curious if we're halfway through the year.
Good point. So, the other sources, those represent budgetary carryover.
Okay.
One, which is $2.5 million in usage of previous year's fund balance,
Okay.
Which is not necessarily as you know.
I got you.
Exactly. And then the other is a carryover of prior.
It's not indicative of where we are in the current year as much as it is just where we are in that particular, I got it. Okay, so, future, keep going forward. There's one where it's a communications is zero.
Yes, we did a reorganization. What we'll be doing is an adjusting.
There was a $500,000 line item there that is like looking like we're not even going to spend it, or is that going to be moving over to our communications department so that they can use that for where we move those individuals?
Correct. We'll be doing an adjusting journal entry to move the actual expenses from the city manager's department to its rightful.
And then I was just going to make a comment to my colleagues. We had a request from our building department. We have people that are housed in the hallways for their offices. It looks like our building department is fine to be able to handle a renovation in order to be able to restructure or add on or do what our building director, building department director felt was important. And I think that we should consider that and ask Mr. Moore to follow through with him.
I took that as plausible direction during the goal-setting strategy. So, we are working collaboratively to offer some definitive recommendations. And much of this is, in fact, as you stated, Mayor, a function of the health of the building fund outcome.
Yep.
Duly noted, and it has been noted, and we look forward to working with all involved.
Very good. Thank you so much, Hugh. It was very interesting.
Likewise.
There's no other questions? Appreciate the presentation and the mid-year budget review. All right, moving on to comments and inquiries on agenda and non-agenda item. Mr. Moore, you have something about our seaweed situation.
Yes, ma'am. And ladies and gentlemen, we have several presentations this evening. Please be mindful that I am supportive of the direction recently offered relative to being tight with respect to presentations. However, with the state However, with the state representatives and the commitment offered previously for our May 16th presentation to this effect, not to mention the update relative to financial conditions of the city are very important. Nevertheless, we'll be mindful of the direction offered in terms of expectations regarding the management of presentations. I offer that because this is the last presentation of this evening formally, and this will be quite brief. And this is in response to the sargasm issue, i.e. seaweed proliferation that is to be experienced on Delray Beach's coast, beginning in the coming months, actually taking shape at this particular point in time. So myself, working collaboratively with leadership of the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Works, were able to, A, benchmark with other municipalities, other coastal municipalities along southeast Florida to ascertain what issues and concerns might be evident, and thus what practices are being executed, as well as to offer a brief update relative to the environmental conditions associated with this particular phenomenon. And therefore, Mr. Mietat and Ms. Barleto, briefly, if you can enlighten the city commission to this effect, I think clarity will be achieved. Gentlemen, ladies.
Good afternoon. Sam Mietat, Director of Parks and Recreation, joined with Ms. E. Barlow.
Director of Public Works. Can we get the presentation up, please?
Yeah.
And it is short, it will be brief, summarize it.
That's the wrong presentation.
We just wanted to take a moment and just touch base with the commission on the sargasm, what a lot of people refer to as the seaweed.
I don't see the presentation on the list, Darcy.
It's okay, I think I can summarize it well for the commission. As many of you know, recent technological advances have increased in an overall awareness of what sargasm is and what it's about. It's much more popular, and this is really a discussion because recent media reports have indicated that we're looking at a very large bloom of sargasm this summer, and different entities have different suggestions on how to kind of take care of or manage their beach and control some of that sargasm that's on the beach accumulating it throughout the summer. What is sargasm? It's essentially seaweed, and it has mixed, mixtures of natural organisms. Within that seaweed, it washes up all day long during the busy, the busiest times of the summer. It has tiny sea creatures in it that can irritate the skin if they get on it. Decomposing sargasm causes an unpleasant smell, it's one of the complaints that you hear most about it. However, sargasm itself does not sting or cause rashes, but some of those organisms may, that are in it, may irritate the skin. There is a hydrogen sulfide level in areas like the beach where large amounts of the airflow can dilute the levels. It's not expected to harm, be harmful to your health. Palm Beach County issued what is like a white paper or their report on how they would like to manage it from both their environmental resources management team, as well as their Parks and Recreation Department back on March 14th. And they essentially recommend a hands-off approach. So their plan to manage the Palm Beach County beaches is to not touch the sargasm at all, let it decompose naturally, let it wash in and out with the change in the current. They look at it as a naturally occurring, it helps capture the, any wind-blown sand and keep it on your beach. Active management could affect the turtles during peak nesting season. And of course, removal can be costly, and it's a continuous thing. You miss one day, and you wouldn't think it never happened again. Many of you are aware, we have a special week here with the Blue Flag Beach coming up. And I think it's an important note that criteria number 16 of the 33 requirements that we had to meet for the Blue Flag designation addresses some of this. And it talks about that it, that the sarcasm is a natural debris that must be left on the beach. The entire beach is an ecosystem, and it must be considered a living and natural environment, and not only as a recreational asset to be neat and tidy at all times. Vegetation should not be allowed to accumulate to the point where it becomes a hazard, however, only if it's absolutely necessary should vegetation be removed. Wherever possible, environmental specialists should be consulted regarding the management of the vegetation on the beach. There is a provision in the county ordinance, or direction as well, that does allow, if it does become an obstacle, that, you know, you can make pathways in it, you can remove it if necessary, and they would address that on a need, you know, case-by-case basis if that becomes an issue. But again, their recommendation, much like the Blue Flag's recommendation, is to not touch it as much as possible. So what do we do? We try to leave the sargasm in place. However, when deposits are significant, each morning, we have a beach raker company that tills it and rakes it into the sand. So we don't remove it, but it does, you know, for the visitor to the beach, it kind of disappears a little bit. You see, it looks like a darker, shadier portion of the sand. This complies with the Palm Beach County recommendations, and still complies with the Blue Flag recommendations, and it's considered a scientific best practice. City staff ensures that the coastal management practices represent a balance of safe recreational use, coastal resiliency, and a protection of our natural resource. In summary, seasonal and annual sargasm is a cyclical component of the local ecosystem. Delray's proximity to the Gulf Stream and the seasonal onshore summer winds means sargasm, it will have an impact, as we've seen over the recent years. And that staff regularly monitors sargasm deposits and makes decisions based on that, and we will try to continue to do so moving forward. And we're here to answer any questions you may have, if you have any.
Any questions? Go right ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. At the Tourist Development Council meeting last week, basically the environmental folks said the same thing, and I'm just glad that you have reached out and spoken to them. They're on it, they're, you know, researching it, and they've, you know, whatever plan they have, they're certainly sharing it with the cities, so I'm glad you're in contact with them because I think it's a good resource. So far, the beach was, looked okay over the weekend, and I did see the big rake doing exactly what you said, and, you know, so far, so good, but hopefully it doesn't get too bad over the summer because I think that's when it's going to impact us the most. Thank you.
Let's get the word out.
Yeah, I, that's exactly what I was going to say. What is going to happen here is we're probably going to get a larger buildup than normal, and you know that when the condos that are along the ocean who think that the city takes care of their beach area too, it just starts to build up and it becomes just almost impassable. We get the calls, why aren't we cleaning the beaches? Well, they're not ours. But I'm afraid that we're going to probably get a little bit more of that if it is as big of a pile that's supposedly coming in. We may miss it all, I don't know, but if it does come in, so I think the best way to deal with this so that we're not getting inundated is to have a send-out messaging to let everybody know, we know what to expect, and you should know what to expect, and this is natural, and we're going along with the best practices. And that way, people will be more understanding on the front end than us having to put out fires on the backside. That would be my recommendation. Yes, sir.
So I'm always, obviously always in favor of doing what the environmental best practices are, but, you know, we've all done research on this, and it seems like this is something that is getting worse every year, a lot of it's due to climate change. Do you think, long-term, we may have to take a less passive approach to dealing with this? That this seems like to be an emerging issue? I mean, we've always had it, but it seems to be getting worse and worse. And it does, it is, it could cause some serious economic issues to our city as well as maybe health issues down the road, I don't know. But do you see down the road us having to maybe take more precautions or take some steps to limit how much of this gets onto the beach, or find a way to harvest it, or do something? Did any of that sort of come up in the research and discussions you guys were having?
I can, can share with you that the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association is routinely looking at this all across the country, not just on the east coast or just in Florida. Some of the problems with alternate methods of dealing with the sargasm are that, are that some communities have tried to rake it up as it comes in and create compost piles out of it. As you know, if you've been to the beach when there's been a heavy deposit, it does not smell good. And it creates bigger problems for the community at large once you try to remove it from the beach and do something like that with it. So, and that is why the, all of the environmentalists have looked at doing the gentle raking into the sand to make it more pleasant to walk out to the water, that preserves the, the life that's inside of it, as well as, as making it more tolerable for beachgoers. The, so much of whether it's a problem on the beach or not is dependent on wind direction and wave action, that it's very difficult to predict in advance whether, even though there's a big, I think that the media calls it blob of it out there in the ocean, whether it's actually going to make it onto shore or not make it onto shore. So it's, it's, it's not one of those things, I think, that you can have significant plans for in advance, you kind of have to deal with it as it happens.
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you guys so much, appreciate the, the presentation. All right, moving on, Mr. Moore, do you have anything else as far as?
I hear it at this time, thank you.
Okay, very good. So we're going to move to the public comment section. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to any item that is not a quasi-judicial or public hearing item, now would be your opportunity. Step forward, state your name and address, make sure you sign into, and then you'll have three minutes.
Michael Wendell, Delray Beach. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I like when Shelley Petroleum calls me Mr. Wind, I think I'm still 50. But I'm 75, 76. I love Delray Beach. I'm going to stay here until I die. I already signed papers, do not resuscitate me. So I want to die here. This is my final stop. I've been all over the world, 30 countries in the world. I work international business. I did everything in my life. I hired the first black woman to sell Cadillacs. She came to for work, wearing African clothes. Nobody would ever hire her to sell Cadillacs in America, ever. I hired her. I'm a leader all my life. I run car dealerships. I had one car, one time, sometimes you get a good assignment and sometimes you get a lousy assignment. I had one assignment, Rockville Center, Cooper Pontiac BMW. I came in, then every single person quit. I was there by myself with one man, maintenance man. He looked like that man, he had that employee of the year award. He looked just like that man. I'm not mechanical at all, all my life I spent in the office. He looked just like that man, with the shirt sticking out, everything. The first thing I did, I bought him a uniform. I told him, deliver it in the morning, $40, out of my pocket. Not Car Corporation. I give him a raise on the end of the month. Here we have a month, a person, same person, the working employee of the year, got a big plaque like this, and a small plaque. This big plaque don't fit his house, he don't live in that type of house, and $200 cash. Why don't we just give him $500 cash? He don't need these plaques. Nobody, working people don't need plaques, they need money. This is hypocrisy. This is hypocrisy. This is all not true. You're not fair to the people, not fair. Evil. Teachers got plaques. They don't need plaques, they need money. The leaders, what leaders? You leader if you do something, you're not a leader, it's not like you're going through drive-through, you pay $37 and you get a leader certificate. You've got to do something. We have people that can do something. He's a computer guy, he's a computer guy. Do your job, have a nice day.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wind.
Okay?
Okay.
And we're not political here, we're only about the city. It's not Democrats or Republicans, I was never a member of any party.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too. Yes, sir.
Tough one to follow. Price Patent, 1020 Tamarind Road, good afternoon, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Delray Beach Preservation Trust. We approved an ordinance concerning the golf course, and we, our board approved it unanimously last, last month. We, I read the ordinance into the record of the HBB, the HBB unanimously supported, sorry, unanimously supported the resolution. I would like to read it, please, into the record. "A resolution of the Delray Beach Preservation Trust urging the historic designation, preservation, and restoration of the Delray Beach Golf Course. Whereas Donald Ross was one of the world's, one of the nation's finest golf course designers, whereas Donald Ross Society has stated his works are an art that merits close care and attention. Whereas Donald Ross designed 18 holes for the city, nine of which are now considered the back nine. Whereas Dick Wilson, one of the preeminent golf designers of his generation, designed what is now considered the front nine. Whereas famous golfers, including Gene Saros and Tony Pina, ladies professional golf Hall of Famer Beth Daniel, she won like 33 LPGA tournaments, and Betty Jamison, who's one of the founding members of the LPGA, they, they graced the course and the grounds for many, many, many years. Whereas the city's comprehensive plan states precious open spaces should be protected. Whereas the comprehensive plan, for the first time, included an historic protection element to further protect and preserve our historic landmarks. Whereas the Ross Nine was built in 1925, the Wilson Nine built in the 50s, making them both eligible for historic designation. Whereas through lack of oversight and proper funding, the course is in deplorable condition. Whereas the course is nearing its centennial year of operation. Resolved by the Delray Beach Preservation Trust, one, insists that the city commission direct staff to take immediate steps to add the golf course to the local register of historic places, urge the city to pursue alternative forms of funding for needed repairs rather than selling any land, urge the city to take advantage of the opportunity to restore both nines to their original condition, and urge the city to reach out to the Donald Ross Society when it concerns the restoration of the back nine." And the trust is here to help the city in any way we can, and we'd love to see you on direct staff to put this, put the historic property on the, on the local register. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ron Platt, I live at 5120 Pine View Circle in Delray. I'm here to speak one more time about my candidacy for that at-large board position on the DDA. I can see, I hope you can see that I'm passionate about this, this is the second time I've spoken to the commission, and probably my last time. I know you're not meeting again on this particular issue till June. It's a very important position, and as a result, a very important decision for you to make on this position. The DDA is one of the most important boards in the city. It is charged with so many responsibilities, such as promoting the business of all retail professional restaurants, and generally speaking, all merchants within its district. It plans concerts, parades, arts and crafts, and other fairs and festivals, educational activities, social events, and much, much more. The DDA and many boards and authorities within the city work tirelessly to make Delray what it is and why it has been named an All-America City three times. And like all other boards, it does its best to not only consider those folks that are coming into the city to eat, to see activities, and to shop, it's there for the concern of the downtown residents as well. Yes, there are other qualified candidates for this position, but this should not be a popularity contest, and this hopefully should not be politically motivated, this decision. Most importantly, this new DDA board member should not be chosen because they may be a dear friend of someone, or they previously may have worked with someone on a committee or business, or because they may agree with one or more of two issues that come before the commission that they feel strongly about. Many different issues come before the DDA and the city commission over the course of the years, and I would trust you would look at the big picture when voting on an applicant, and not just necessarily one or two recent issues or events that has come up. When making your decision, your most important consideration should be who would best serve the city, and nothing else, that's all you should think about on this. You should look at every candidate's qualifications and then make your own decision on who that one person should be. My self-promotion again is that a lawyer, a businessman, a property owner, and doing business in Delray Beach for over 20 years, a former restaurant owner, previous board experience, and the fact that I really care about what is, you know, what is best for this city, and I feel like I am the best person for this position. this city, and I feel like I am the best person for this position, I truly would be proud and extremely excited to serve on the board of the DDA and serve this city well. And thanks again for hearing me out a second time. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Platt.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
He is very passionate. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney, and our community. I am Mavis Benson, a resident, business owner, and DDA Chair. Vibrant and vibrancy were words that I heard a number of times at your goal-setting workshop. They are words that may be interpreted in many ways, so I looked it up. Vibrancy is the state of being full of energy and life, the quality of being energetic, exciting, and full of enthusiasm. Using it in a sentence, no one can fail to be struck by the vibrancy of New York. I could cross out New York and say, no one could fail to be struck by the vibrancy of Delray. It's a word that's always a focus and attention, and after hearing your conversation, it will definitely be a top priority in the conversation in our goal-setting this year. Many people feel that vibrancy is specific to nighttime. It is not. Thanks to a very simple event, our streets were very vibrant last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in particular. This was the 15th year of our Mother's Day Orchid giveaway. Over the three days, we gave away 350 orchids, which means $70,000 in sales for our merchants. It was wonderful to see mothers, daughters, husbands, and fathers shopping with a purpose to accumulate their $200 in receipts for a beautiful orchid to give in their Mother's Day giving. As a merchant, I'm thrilled for the business that it brings to my gallery, and as a DDA board member, I'm always impressed with the execution and results. It's a simple promotion that is relatively inexpensive but accomplishes our goal to promote our merchants and bring business throughout our entire downtown. From early morning with shopping at the Green Market to midday lunch and shopping, and afternoon maybe attending the Cornell Museum, or perhaps just playing or relaxing on the old school ground, School Square grounds, then going into nighttime with dining and entertainment, our downtown is always full of excitement, energy, and enthusiasm. Our vision for a vibrant downtown is almost 24/7. Unlike New York, we do give our downtown a little time to sleep. Thanks to you, our commissioners, our city partners, the CRA and the Chamber of Commerce, as always, by working together, we continue to produce vibrant and thriving downtown, a vibrant and thriving downtown that benefits everyone in our community. But our biggest thanks go to our residents, our community. By shopping in our many businesses and services, dining in our restaurants, and participating in our events, you play a crucial role in creating vibrancy throughout our downtown. For that, we are most grateful. If I could take one second and just share with you, if you haven't seen it, we are having a town hall tomorrow evening, and we invite everyone to attend. It's at the Vintage Gym at Old School Square, begins at 5:30, and Bob Gibbs will be returning after five years now of being in the Shopability Report, and we're anxious to see what he has to say. So I hope everyone out there can attend. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is now closed. I'm going to go to consent agenda. I wanted to make one quick just adjustment. We had the 7D that needed to be moved up. We are an hour and a half into the meeting. I'm wondering if we could just make sure that it's seven, now charged as 7 AAA so we can move on it first.
Sure.
Okay. So entertain a motion as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move to 7 AAA, which was 7D Resolution 92-23.
Hope you can figure out how we're going to get to the other items. We were so all over.
I have them. I got them.
Good evening, Anthea Genotis Development Services Director. This is typically not an item that would have appeared on the regular agenda, and so maybe I might be able to save all of this time.
Yep.
The reason that it is on the regular agenda is, and it's being approved via resolution, is that there is an existing building that is sitting, crossing property lines, so there's something of a chicken and an egg situation. So we can't approve the plat until the building is removed, but if they're not going to be able to subdivide it into three parcels, why would they take down the building? And so that is why it's a resolution before you today. And Mr. Carney's here, I don't know if you need a?
I should approve.
Second.
Any comments? Anything going on? No? Okay, call the roll, please.
I had five pictures.
Did you want to?
No, 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 no.
I know you have a pre?
I do, I do. My brother's birthday, so.
Okay, so call the roll, please.
Yes. I'm sorry. Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Go enjoy the celebration.
Thank you.
Very welcome. All right.
Tom, it was your best presentation.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go to 7AA, which was removed from the consent agenda 6G by Mr. Moore. This is a subordination of a second mortgage for 1017 Southwest 8th Street.
The reason it was removed, there's a slight adjustment to the particular recommendation of which Mr. Waltour, our Director of Neighborhood and Community Services, will offer a very brief presentation to clarify accordingly.
Very good.
Well, before we do that, should we move to approve the consent agenda first?
We did, I thought we did.
I think they did.
You did?
They did.
As amended.
Your chief, oh, okay.
They did.
I thought it was just to move the other item.
Understood.
They did it.
Did you need something for that other item to be moved? It wasn't moved, it was already moved, I just made sure that it was a triple, AAA instead of?
I just want the record to be clear that the consent agenda was approved.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir. You can, you've got the floor.
Good afternoon or good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, Sam Waltour, Neighborhood and Community Services. The adjustment to this item, to the subordination, this was a household that got a purchase assistance. There was a better interest rate that was achieved, and we updated it for the total savings went from $32,000 over the life of the loan to $37,000. So that's what you see on the marked-up copy of the memo that was just passed out to you. So.
So what was the change that we needed to have this on the regular agenda rather than in the consent?
Because we were talking to the bank as of late today, and we just wanted to make sure that we explained what the change was.
Got it. Thank you.
All right.
Backup has to be reflected for public domain and therefore that.
It'll be a motion to approve as amended?
Correct.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Thank you.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Okay, and there's just one more change that we moved, which I did. This was originally 6M, moved to 7BB. This is the approval of a First Amendment to the exclusive franchise agreement between the city of Delray Beach and Waste Management. I wanted to ask the question, I'm glad you're up here, Sammy. There was a discrepancy of $100 fee or fine if garbage pails are 10 inches open with trash. So I just want to make sure everybody understands, fill those garbage cans up and you're open by 10 inches, you're going to get a $100 fine, but it's not $100, it's actually $200. $200. That's pretty stiff. That?
Okay.
If that's?
That's what it currently is.
If I could, it's currently at that, and that's for commercial accounts, that's the cleaning program.
Only commercial.
Yes.
Not residential.
Not residential.
Because it didn't, I was, it said the wall of the receptacle, and I'm kind of going, that's so extreme for the, okay, just wanted to make sure, so.
Just commercial accounts.
So then the commercial accounts need to understand, if you're 10 inches up above where you are, you're getting a $200 fine.
That's it.
And it was, it was just a?
A scribbler's error.
Scribbler's error.
Yes.
Exactly. All right, very good.
Good job.
Make motion to, I mean, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Call the roll, please, I'm sorry.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes. Okay, we are no longer entertaining the Resolution 2823, that's been removed. We're on 7B. 7B and 7C are both quasi judicial hearings, so I'm going to read the quasi judicial hearing instructions into the record. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be allowed 20 minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city staff and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. If there's anybody here that is going to be speaking on Resolution 73-23 or Resolution 91-23, both on the agenda as 7B or 7C, please stand and be sworn in.
All right. Please raise your right hand. By the authority vested in me as a notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 73-23. This is the overhead doors facing, this is the parcel that we, I think, discussed, if I'm not mistaken, this is not Galaxy Marble, is it?
That's exactly right.
Oh, it is. Okay, it's Galaxy Marble, then. To the commission, any ex parte disclosure that needs to be made, let's go down from Deputy Vice Mayor.
None.
None.
None?
None.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to enter the project file into the record.
Good evening, Anthea Genotis for Development Services. I'd like to enter file number 2022-241 into the record, and the applicant is here with a brief presentation of their request.
Very good. You've got the floor.
Hello, everyone. My name's Alexandra Smith from Ken Carlson Architect. I'm here to represent Galaxy Marble. We are requesting a relief waiver for the overhead door in the rear of the property. That is actually the front view, right? Just so you guys can see. Galaxy Marble's a already established marble supplier currently in Pompano Beach, but moving over to here, that is the view from the Congress site, it's a vacant lot currently. If you can go to this side. That's the parcel right in the center there. It is, as I said, through sites, it's on one side, Congress Avenue, the other side, Northwest 18th Avenue, it's just north of Atlantic Avenue. Those are just the existing conditions of the front site right now. It's overgrown, and I think this will be a great new addition of this good-looking building there. This is the side that we're going to need the waiver for. This is off 18th Avenue. It's a much smaller street, very industrial kind of area back there. Since it's vacant, the only, there are no neighbors on either side, this is the only neighbor, also very industrial, so they'll be the only one really affected by the door view there. So now moving to the design. The reason we actually need the waiver is because that site, as you can see, is very long and skinny, so no matter how we tried to put the building, there was no way to get the loading on the side. So we did try to take every step possible to mitigate any impact it would have to the surrounding neighbors and to the public. As you can see, the building's set back much further than the required 25 feet. We are set back about 130 feet. And in addition, the landscape island, we strategically placed the vegetation to help screen the overhead door from the view. Also, we do have a whole perimeter wall as well as a sliding gate that will be, it will be open during business hours, but at night it will be, or after business hours it will be closed. So I have a few different views here of it. It's really hard to even actually see, see if you can even see it back in there. It's pretty well hidden as it is. That's where the gate closed. Once the gate's closed, you really can't see it at all. This is looking from the other gate, is a two entrance in the back, so that's from the other gate, again, very far back in there, hard to see, and when you close the gate, again, completely gone. Any questions?
We'll get back to that.
Okay.
Let the staff go ahead and do their presentation.
Okay. I'll just put a couple of things on the record. I actually think it's a fairly straightforward request. I guess I'll. Can't see you in the new table. I got it, Darcy. Okay, so since this is Resolution 7323, and it is a waiver to allow overhead doors facing a public right-of-way. The property has a double frontage. The front is on North Congress and the back is on Northwest 18th. It is in the Commerce District in the MIC area, which is one of the few areas in the city that allows industrial types of uses, and, you know, this is a business relocating into the city. So it is a long, sort of narrow, site, and it is a, the proposal is to build a one-story warehouse with an office. And this is the arrangement, this side is Congress, where you can see the customer parking and the entry that was on the rendering that you saw at the beginning of the applicant's presentation. The setback of the door from the rear or from the Northwest 18th Avenue side is 128 feet. There's parking, again, a fence, landscaping, other things. The property is only 98 feet wide, which makes it difficult to achieve loading and unloading on the side on the interior setbacks. So again, this is the view from the main, or the frontward-facing part of the business facing Congress. The overhead doors would face the less intense road. It is surrounded by MIC zoning with existing warehouse and outside storage, as depicted in the applicant's presentation. The functions of the storage and loading will be inside the new building. This is an elevation. The door is this piece here, it's only 12 feet wide, so it's not, it's not, you know, a series of doors or, you know, and again, it is largely shielded from the landscaping and the perimeter wall and fence that is proposed. This is a unique waiver. We haven't had one of these before that we could find in our records. However, the surrounding neighborhood things to consider is established with these types of industrial uses, the shielding that is presented, and ultimately, if you decide to approve or deny, it should be based on the findings for a waiver, that it won't have an adverse effect, that it's not going to affect a public facility or create an unsafe situation, and it's not a special privilege. And that concludes my presentation.
Very good. So at this point in time, we're going to invite anybody from the public who would like to speak to this issue. This would be your time. And seeing no one moving, I will close the public comment portion of this agenda item and go back to the applicant and to the staff, asking if there's any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony.
None.
Okay, to the commission. Entertain a motion.
It's actually good timing, interesting timing.
Yes, we were just talking.
Were you here for our workshop at?
No, I was not. It's all about Congress Avenue. You're what we're looking for. I don't think you're going to have any problems up here.
No.
Yeah, and actually, your building looks beautiful, too.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly what we should be doing. We should be assisting businesses just like yours, I want to go just in that location.
So is, are you moving from Pompano or are you opening up a second store?
We are actually the architect for it, but Galaxy is, I'm moving from Pompano into Delray.
Well, tell them, welcome to Delray.
I will.
Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
All right, you, too. All right, we're on to 7C, which is Resolution 91-23. This is Brick Tops Restaurant. Let me start by asking for any ex parte communication. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I had a conversation with Mr. Schiller.
Yes, I was contacted by the registered agent.
Okay, I don't have any unless it's on the server.
I spoke to Mr. Schiller.
Same, spoke to Mr. Schiller as well.
All right, very good. So, at this point, we're going to have the staff go ahead and enter the project file into the record.
Good evening. The project file is for the Class 5 site plan that includes this request. The file number is 2022-300. And Mr. Schiller's here for the presentation.
Very good. Yours.
Good evening.
Neil Schiller, Government Law Group, 137 Northwest First Avenue, here in Delray Beach,
Florida. Here tonight proudly representing Brick Tops, hopefully a new addition to the city of Delray Beach. And along with, along with me is my sidekick, Jeff Costello, planner extraordinaire. Our request tonight is in-lu parking for Brick Tops Restaurant. We were one of the four applications that was in the process and in the system before you passed your zoning in progress last week. We're seeking to buy nine spaces for in-lu parking, which generates about $213,000 in fees. We're required 30 spaces overall for the 5,000-square-foot restaurant. 21 of those 30 spaces will be provided on-site. This is the aerial of the property on Atlantic Avenue and Northeast Fifth, where just a block, two blocks north, just north of the Popcorn House, which is obviously going to stay and we'll be celebrated. West End Restaurants is the owner-manager of Brick Tops. They have 10 current locations, eight Brick Tops, two River House. The closest one is Palm Beach, which I tested gladly on Saturday for brunch, and I have to say that the menu was great and the service is great, and the food was even better. They also have two restaurants called The River House, one in Palm Beach Gardens and one in Nashville. So, this is a real restaurant operator, formerly of Houston's. People like to say this is an elevated Houston's menu, and it really is. I will get to the reason why they, I don't know why it's called Brick Tops, but I will find out the owner. I haven't had a chance to ask him yet. This is a rendering of what we're proposing to eventually build. Wide sidewalks will be subject to a sidewalk café permit coming in the future, and there is a waiver for tinted glass coming before you in the future. It's just an elevation, not that you guys should be considering any of this. The site plan, this is just for your information, is 5,000 square feet, indoor and outdoor. Again, 21 on-site parking spaces. You can see where they are going to be with nine that we're seeking in-lu for. There are findings that you have to make for in-lu parking, as you know. Our request is consistent with the LDRs, the comprehensive plan, parking, and curbside management plan. The property, as you know, is also the central core of the CBD, where a lot of parking options are available. Uber and Lyft has increased, as has Freebie and other multi modes of transportation. This is just an area, an aerial where you can see available parking spaces. So, there's a lot of parking in our downtown, not necessarily owned by the city or the CRA, but is available for the public to park. We believe that we meet all the criteria for you to approve tonight. Again, we're seeking nine spaces. 21 will be provided on-site. The DDA recommended approval at their meeting, and the Parking Management Advisory Board recommended approval at theirs. We asked for your approval tonight and are here to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Sir? Okay, so, Anthea Geniotis, Development Services Director. So, the property in question is, this is the existing building, and you can see that its orientation along Federal is, half of the property has the building, and then there's a side parking lot. This is in the central business district, the central core sub-district. So, there's an existing two-story, 7,000-square-foot building with retail on the ground floor, and there's an office above. And the proposal is to remove the building in its entirety and build about a 5,000-square-foot restaurant. What is starting to move through the process, just to put it on the record, is the Atlantic Avenue Resource Survey and Historic Evaluation. This building was identified as a contributor. So, a potential contributor. So, if the building is removed, the code then requires the new building to setback a bit further than the current building is positioned, creating a wider sidewalk area with trees and room for outdoor dining. The building then extends, aligns the sidewalk, and the parking all moves to the back instead of being positioned on the side. This is all going to be considered under the Class 5 site plan, but just so you, you know, you can see, I oriented the plan, they're not facing north, but just so you can see, that's the existing building, and the new building will extend along the front. So, again, the request is for nine in-lu spaces. The project is required to provide 30 spaces for parking the restaurant, and they have achieved 21 on-site, in addition to some loading areas and other things that need to work for the restaurant. It's largely accessed through the alley system in the back, so that's here. In-lu allows a maximum, the current LDR allows new construction, under the current rules, to use 30% of the required parking to an in-lu situation. This is maximizing that 30%. If you were doing adaptive reuse in an existing building, then there is a higher ability. And I'm just considering what we're thinking about with in-lu. I just want to be sure, giving you an overall view for other considerations in addition to just this one. So, again, this is the rendering of the building. The building was submitted before the ordinance that's coming along later, in a more, I think, an execution of Art Deco that is more consistent with the city's history, which we'll talk about later, so. And again, what you can see with the existing building, I want to say, is about here, on where you see the change in the pavement, and the new building steps back. And that allows room for additional street trees and the sidewalk café in the front. Achieving the sidewalk café will require an update to our lease with DOT, so just making sure that's okay, moving forward if the in-lu is approved. And again, the, for this request, the payment structure is based on the geographical location and the adopted fees, and in this case, the requirement is just over $23,000 per space, and the determination has to be that there is adequate public parking available in the area. There are public garages as well as on-street parking in multiple locations along multiple This request was reviewed by the DDA on April 10th, and there was a recommendation to approval, and it was also reviewed by the Parking Management Advisory Board in April with another recommendation of approval. If you have any questions.
Very good. This is another one of our quasi-judicial hearings, so if there's anybody here that would like to speak to this issue, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one. Public comment is closed. We'll go back to the applicant and the staff. Is there any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony?
No, ma'am.
All right, to the commission.
I guess we're going to have a few more of these. So, it meets the current criteria under the current rules until we change it, so I'll be in favor.
Anything else? I, it just kills me to lose the building, because it is something that, when you drive by it, you recognize, you know, it's been there longer than you have been here. So, anyway, but it is what progress, what happens with progress, and is what it is. Anything else? Entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Aren't you, in fact, his sidekick?
Wow.
That is true.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
No, go ahead. Second.
Second for discussion.
Well, no, I just have a question about the in-lu fees. I am just fascinated by this in-lu fee. So, are these funds earmarked for a future parking lot someplace or a parking garage?
That's, that's a good question, and I think it's a good one for a future workshop, but yeah, probably, but it hasn't been yet. We have not. Okay.
Yeah, meanwhile, it simply goes into the Parking Trust Fund.
It's just a big fund.
So, if I may, Madam Mayor, June 13th, we made a commitment for that workshop meeting to be exclusively dedicated to the budget process. We'll touch on some of the goal-setting outcomes that occurred this past Friday as a function of that, and that will be one of the footnotes. It will be an overall education, as well as an opportunity for the illustrious Delray Beach City Commission to offer its thoughts and direction in that regard. So, with that, more to come. Nevertheless, here we are.
All right, just some names. Okay, so, we had a motion, but did we have a second by somebody? Yes?
I second it for discussion.
Okay, very good. All right, so, call the roll. Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, guys, good luck. All right, moving on to 7E. We already discussed 7D as 7AAA. 7E is now going to be the nomination for the appointment to the Board of Adjustments. We start with Mr. Bolston.
Yes, there is a whopping two choices, and I'll go with Ms. Cullinan.
Second.
Cullinan.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns, you have the second pick and the final pick.
To this same board?
Yes.
Okay, then I go with the last and final choice.
Could you call the name out?
Yes, it's, oh, William, somebody help me with that. I don't want to mess up his...
Sholosir.
Sholosir, okay.
Second.
Call the role, oh, well, call the roll, please. Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
All right, moving on to 7F, which is nomination to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. This would be Mr. Long.
I'd like to nominate my replant.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 7G, which is Resolution 103-23. Ms. Jellin?
This is just the memorialization of the commission's direction at the last meeting to reaffirm that the city commission is going to be, is going to comprise the CRA and to have it as a five-member board.
Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution 103-23.
Second.
Call the, call the roll, please. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
All right, very good. Moving on to public hearings and second readings, ordinance number 12-23.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Delray Beach by amending Chapter 4 Zoning Regulations, Article 4.4, Base Zoning Districts, Section 4.4.13, Central Business CBD District, Subsection F Architectural Standards, to require City Commission approval for the use of Masonry Modern and Art Deco architectural styles prior to site plan approval, providing conflicts clause, a severability clause, authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. This is second reading.
Ms. Geniotis, you got a nice presentation for this one.
I hope so. Okay, so, we, in the downtown, the Central Business District has architectural design guidelines that have been adopted, and what's before you tonight is not actually to take any out or remove them, although we've received some direction to update some of the images, which we're working on. We'll bring back to you by resolution. And ultimately, the request is more related to process in order, I think, the intent is to elevate the execution of two styles than what we've been seeing downtown. So, the guidelines provide basic instruction related to composition, building articulation, storefront balconies, and identify seven styles that are sort of expected in downtown based on historical precedent, our climate, and the building scale that we have in the downtown area. One of them is Main Street vernacular. The others are a Florida vernacular execution, Anglo-Caribbean Mediterranean revival, Art Deco, the classical tradition, and Masonry Modern. The definition of these styles is purposely broad. They do capture, whereas, for example, in our historic districts, there's very big distinctions between, or there's, there are distinctions between the executions of different periods and decades and things. These sort of capture a larger amount of them to provide more flexibility, you know, to developers and architects that are designing in the city. Just because it's not listed doesn't mean you can't do it. It just means if something is coming along that is maybe not as consistent with the Village by the Sea that we're expecting to realize, then it moves through an extra board, which means SPRAB or HPP, depending on the property, makes a recommendation, and ultimately, the city commission reviews it again. This is really meant to provide a little bit more public input when it's something that departs. The Ray Hotel used this avenue to do the floating box and the more modern metal plating that you see on that building. So, there it is. So, these are kind of what was explained and how it moved through, so that we had an understanding of how it would be executed. So, the two that have come to, risen to this level of concern are Masonry Modern, which I think has been just the most prolific type of architecture we're seeing in downtown, but also throughout the city, keeping in mind that SPRAB sees more than downtown. They see all of what is coming in. And then, there's been concern about the execution of Art Deco. We have, I, since we last talked, we found this book in our offices, which was about, a book published about Art Deco of the Palm Beaches, and there is an entire section on Delray Beach. And this building at the end of Atlantic Avenue is actually showcased as one of the examples, and it's still there today. So, you can see that what we've had historically is a more simple version of Art Deco, so this goes to possibly updating our design guidelines a little bit. But when the guidelines were drafted, there were already approvals that were moving through that had this style, and the local architect that particularly implemented this style for the time being did a little bit more of an exaggerated version of Art Deco, and perhaps that's what the community is sort of responding to. And then, Masonry Modern, which I think has started to be viewed as, sometimes it's well-executed with a lot of wood detailing or other things, and other times, it looks like perhaps it's just a way to do very inexpensive, simple detailing. So, I think that's been the concern. Not picking on either of these buildings, I think actually, as the Hampton is coming out of the ground, what you're going to see is very wide sidewalks, wonderful street trees, there's an open space relief, things like that, but again, these are the two that have given, I think, the most consternation to the community. So, we can't say that you don't do them, but then the idea is to adjust the process. So, what is in the ordinance would basically require, instead of just final action by SPRAB, it would go from SPRAB to this board, and that would be the way that it would move through the process, so an extra public hearing. There are several, you know, policies related to this concern, one of which is Objective NDC 2.2, which strives to protect and enhance the Village by the Sea character of the downtown and the neighborhoods located east of 95, and then others about, you know, form and quality, and then reviewing and updating LDRs, but also streamlining. And so, this is not streamlining, this is more reacting, I think, to a concern about the execution of the other objective. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this ordinance on March 20th and voted unanimously to recommend approval.
If you have any questions. To the commission? Public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, right, this is public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak to the ordinance that we just spoke about, 12-23, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. To the commission. Start us off.
Sure, and, you know, perhaps I'm missing some context here, but, you know, I feel like we've done some things as a board, even since I've been on, that have helped streamline things for, that will eventually help streamline things for planning and zoning and SPRAB. We're talking about doing some things to that effect, which I think is great. This seems like a step backwards to me. It feels like we're cherry-picking two of our architectural, approved architectural styles, and then adding in an additional approval hearing. In my mind, we should either remove those as approved architectural styles, if they don't fit in our city anymore, or we should trust the board, the SPRAB that we appoint, to be able to make those decisions about these styles. So, and, you know, I want to hear what my colleagues have to say, because I could be missing some of the context here, but for me, this, this isn't something that, at face value, I agree with.
Vice Mayor?
I definitely see your concerns, and obviously, we're making a lot of changes to streamline things, and this does seem the opposite of that. We've had conversations, and it's not so much that we just picked out these two, and actually, I asked staff, like, how do we objectively have this conversation? And depending on the timing, you might pick an architectural style that's starting to saturate your city, and today, it's these styles, but 20 years ago, it would have been other[1761.04] other styles. And so how do, what, what can we put in place without getting rid of them, without deleting them, still leaving them as an option? How can we incentivize to maybe choose some of the other ones, so that it's diverse, our architectural styles diverse? Because really, we're just seeing so many choose these two, right? And it might be, it might have to do with the financial aspects of these two options, right? Um, and I thought staff came up with a, no, no one wants an extra step, right?
Right.
Right, even, we don't want the extra step. Um, so I thought it was a really clever idea to say, yeah, you can still choose these, but there's gonna be an extra step. I'm hoping people don't choose that extra step. I'm hoping that steers people to some of these other styles, which we rarely, rarely ever see. Like, I've been up here five years, there's a few of those styles that I've never seen. And so we're just trying to-
As a deterrent, more or less?
Yeah, yeah, an incentive-
For an attempt to just kind of sway, yes, sway.
One of the other five, I, I, I would like to put it, right? An incentive to choose one of the other five, I think is, uh, so, we, we had, we did have the discussion, and, uh, and I gotta give staff credit, I think it's pretty clever, and I, and I, I look forward to measuring it, right, and, and seeing if it works, so.
And if I can piggyback, not just, uh, incentivize, but also if they choose one of these other styles, that we will have the opportunity of saying, yeah, that's just way too plain Jane, add some things to it to be able to make it look better, and we're good with it, because what's happening is, is we're seeing kind of a boxy with very little, you know, anything going on it because of maybe the cost function, but you're already doing a box. Or really outlandish kind of change, uh, of the, the Art Deco that doesn't really say Delray Beach, it might say South Miami at some way, you know, back in time, you know, era. So what we'd like to do is, those are the two that we have received the most responses from the community on, and it was over and over, so that's one of the reasons why we're here, um, because of what we're receiving, and also how we could possibly kind of slight, you know, slightly lean into maybe some of the other styles.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if it's Lynn or Anthea would be the best person to answer. Um, with the potential accommodation in the future that we're gonna discuss with SBRAB and PNC, see here that, you know, it specifically says SBRAB, it specifically says Historic Board, would that have an effect if we take certain actions in the future? Okay, just wanna make sure. Thanks for the presentation.
All right, so if there's no other questions or concerns, let's go.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Madam Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
I don't love it, but, see, it sounded like-
It probably won't be, hopefully it won't be any work, okay? Maybe that, you see what I'm saying? You know, maybe this isn't gonna work out, so it's no work for us, all right?
I'm with you.
Extra work, I should say. Ordinance number, uh, 13-23.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Delray Beach by amending Chapter 2, Administrative Provisions, Article 2.2, Establishment of Boards Having Responsibilities for Land Development Regulations, Section 2.2.3, the Site Plan Review and Appearance Board, to reduce the meeting requirement from two meetings per month to one meeting per month and to update language clarity, providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes, and this to a second reading.
So this was an ordinance that was underway before, um, the direction to seek to, uh, more aggressively streamline, but, um, just to finish this one off, in the meantime, though, just to make it official that SBRAB is once a month, um, we do occasionally hold more, depending on the volume of applications, um, and that would not change, but, um, right now, we're operating under special permission by the manager, and it would just be better if the LDRs reflected it.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you again. Um, any concerns or, or any questions from the public that would like to speak up and to speak to? Ordinance number 13-23, please step forward and state your comments now. Seeing no one, public comment is closed, to the commission, I think we're good, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Madam Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
And ordinance 18-23.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances Title 5, Public Works, Chapter 56, Stormwater, General Provisions by amending Chapter, sec, amending Section 56.03, Findings and Determinations to Modify the Intent of Stormwater Management Assessments to Fund the Stormwater Management System Enterprise Fund, and to amend the basis for stormwater assessments to tier-based system for residential properties. By amending Section 56.04, Definitions to Update Definitions to Be Consistent with the New Basis for Stormwater Assessments. By amending Section 56.15, Position of Stormwater Management Assessment, Classification, and Criteria, to Clarify That Assessments Will Be Applied to Develop Properties and to Remove References to the Per-Acreage Assessment System. By amending Section 56.16, Establishment of Rate for Stormwater Management Assessments to, oops, repeal the existing per-acreage stormwater management assessment system to adopt a tier-based system, tier-based stormwater management assessment system for residential properties, and to delete discounts for property located within the Lake Worth Drainage District and property with privately maintained drainage systems. By amending Section 56.17, Adjustment of Stormwater Management Assessments to Update References from the Environmental Services Department to Public Works, Delete Language Requiring Consideration for Retention Facilities for Owner Initiated Adjustments, Remove Discount Eligibility for Property with Private Drainage Facilities, and Delete Language Authorizing the City to Inspect Private Drainage Facilities. By amending Section 56.20, Private Facilities to Clarify Responsibilities Related to Maintenance and Operations and Inspections on Private Property, and by amending Section 56.23, Stormwater Assessment Process to Provide Authorization to Establish Reserves and to Require the Preparation of a Stormwater Management Assessment Role Annually, Providing a Conflicts Clause, Providing a Severability Clause, Authority to Codify, and Providing an Effective Date. This is also second hearing.
Ms. Barlato?
Thanks, Lynn.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
You said it all for-
I did it. All she has to say is-
This is why they don't let me bring many ordinance forward.
Exactly.
Okay, so I have a very short presentation for you this evening, just to remind you of the presentation that we gave at the workshop on April 18th. This is the, the final reading of the ordinance that puts the provisions that you voted on, or you gave consensus for earlier into action. So the reason that we are doing a new stormwater rate structure is to address the city's stormwater obligations and customer needs, to reflect current program needs, um, to give the city defensible policies for how we implement stormwater utility assessments to the general public, and, um, to provide a sustainable and dedicating fund, dedicated funding source for stormwater management, which is what we use to address the issues with climate change you heard about earlier in the Office of Sustainability's presentation. Um, the new rate structure, um, it eliminates some previous stormwater discounts and exemptions that we, that we had in place previously. Um, some of those were for people who were within the Lake Worth Drainage District, which, um, didn't preclude the city from performing stormwater maintenance activities within their
It's Nancy.